This is our regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Mayor Coombs?
Here.
Councilmembers Bagley?
Here.
Christensen?
Here.
Finley?
Here.
Levinson?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Santos? Mayor Yubacorm?
All right. Let's stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on the list will have an opportunity to speak at final call, publicly invited to be heard. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions? No, excuse me, Don.
That's all right. There are no revisions tonight, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Don. Is there a report from City Manager?
No report, Mayor, Council.
Okay. The first person on the list is Strider Benson.
Well, greetings. Headwind again going to Boulder, but coming back it was dark. Strider Benson, 9:51 17. There is so much going on, and I know that there isn't too much, and maybe there's no point in talking about it here, but sometimes people like to get things fresh. Immigration, all kinds, ISIS, all kind of stuff, but we still have Ferguson. And I went into some length last week about the particulars, one that I may not have specified very clearly, that after the prosecutor came out and gave the defense statement to not bring any charges, 45-minute speech, there was about 45 minutes where everybody was calm outside. Nothing was going on. You had hundreds and hundreds of police and National Guard in Clayton, but not in Ferguson. And then, I don't know if there were incidents or not, but the police started throwing tear gas and coming after folks. Folks got messed up and got an attitude. Go back to Ferguson, hey, no police, no fire department, no nothing. And whether it was provocateurs, or gangsters, or just local people who had had too much, the fires started. And at first, there was only one or two or three. And no police, no fire trucks, no nothing. In other words, it was set up to burn down the black part of town, which to a large extent happened. This week, we had John Carlos and Tommy Smith, and the person of St. Louis Rams football players. Hands up, don't shoot. Don't forget the '68 Olympics. Not only was Martin Luther King and Bobby Kennedy killed that year, but in Mexico City just before the Olympics, about 350 students were murdered in the stadium. And let's not forget that. There was a lot going on, and people had a right to say, let's take a stand on it. Here in Longmont, as far as I know, the last 34 years, we've had pretty good policing, even though some of you know that some of my personal experiences haven't been great. But as a whole, we're doing about the best we can, but let's keep on doing better. Thank you.
Thank you, Strider.
Stan Tool?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs and Council. My name is Stan Tool. I am a resident here of the city of Longmont. The reason I'm going to talk today is about the affordable housing situation in this town. I'm going to try to make two points. The first point is like I have people that are... Right now, Longmont has a zero vacancy rate in apartments. And there's a horrible situation taking place where a lot of these apartment companies, or property management companies, are charging exorbitant fees for quote "an open apartment," for an application fee. Sometimes they'll take 200 or 300 applications for a single open place. Everywhere, when I've checked most states and most municipalities, this is illegal to do something like that. And I hope Council will do something about the application fee fraud that's taking place in this community. The other thing I wanted to talk about, which is an unmet need in this community, is that if you are, let's say, a single person, and we actually have people that sometimes they'll come in, and let's say they're trying to work or something like that, they have a job, and maybe they get injured, or they have a health issue, and they'll need surgery. What happens in this community, if somebody finds himself in that position, they have absolutely... If the hospitals are refusing to do any sort of medical treatment and surgery, if they can't dismiss these people to some sort of recovery place, there's no recovery place in this community. The shelter for the homeless does not help, the churches do not help, people are absolutely... And this is personally... I had a hernia, and I met somebody at the dollar store, a young guy, who was working as a carpenter, as a contract carpenter. And he could not... He had a bad hernia, and he could not get surgery because he did not have a... He could not get a place to recover in. So those are my two things. The application fee fraud taking place in this community, and someplace where somebody who maybe comes in town to do some work and gets in a medical crisis. So a place where somebody... Some sort of setup that these people can have a place they can recover from their surgery. Thank you. Thank you. Paul Tiger?
Paul Tiger, 452 Dixon. So you probably see me out here in the... Dog here. You see me out here waiting every couple weeks to thank you. I came out here to thank you. You probably don't expect that from me, but there's two things. One is that a few years ago, I pushed the council, with the help of my neighbors, to fix the intersection at Third and Alpine. And it's a wonderful thing. Every time I make a left-hand turn there, I look over, and I can see the oncoming turn lane over there, which forces me to look over towards the car dealerships. It's a wonderful thing. It's a great intersection. It's big. It's wide. Thank goodness traffic engineering didn't give me what I wanted, which was a four-way stoplight. They know traffic. I don't know. But I do know that people were dying at that intersection. People were going too fast. They did a wonderful job. Nick and Tom Street, and all the people that worked on that, it's just a wonderful thing. I'd also like to thank this gentleman, and some other folks who helped me clear Main Street from the construction signs. 18 months ago, before the construction started on the Roosevelt apartment buildings, there was a lot of construction signs. And it turns out that the company that had those signs went out of business. And all this was sold at auction, but the new buyer didn't know where the inventory was located in front of my store, and everybody else's store. And lots of people have told me that since those signs have disappeared, they appreciate... They can see the shops. We've always had this problem with these flags and the signs and things that everybody in the city puts up, and then you can't see the stores. We burned those. So it's really very nice. Thank you. Thank you so much. And now, they've moved those signs. There's still inventory in the streets. They're just not on Main Street. So there's a little bit to work on there, but I appreciate it. It was good. It is good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. I guess that ends our first call, publicly invited to be heard.
Mayor, there are no ordinances on second reading. So the next item on the agenda is item 9, the consent agenda. Item 9A is ordinance 2014-73, a bill for an ordinance amending chapters 1502 and 15.10, and cross-references of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding development review procedures. Public hearing and second reading scheduled for December 16, 2014. 9B is Resolution 2014-109, a resolution of the Longmont City Council approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the state of Colorado on behalf of Front Range Community College for a senior computer tech center. Item 9C, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the city of Longmont's application for the Bloomberg Temporary Public Art Challenge. And item 9D, approve the 2015 legislative policies, including National League of Cities Legislative Priorities, Colorado Municipal League Policy Statement, and Longmont Water Principles.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, I'd like to pull item A and D, please.
Okay. Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'd like to move the consent agenda minus A and D.
I would second that. Councilmember Finley?
All right. I've got a motion that's been seconded. Let's vote.
Sorry. There we go.
Okay, that passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor Don Burchett will introduce item 9A.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs. Members of Council, Don Burchett, Planning and Development Services Division. I think I need a bigger podium. Thank you. The staff is here tonight. We weren't really prepared to make a presentation. I know we've talked about this at study sessions, but if we want to just... I know we've talked about this, study sessions, but if we want to just answer questions regarding the information that was in the pack, that'd be fine with staff.
Councilmember Levison?
Actually, Mayor, the reason I pulled it off is that, you know, this was over 120 pages of really dense code, and I'm usually really good at reading it. But when I got to that section, first of all, I found things that needed to be deleted out of the original amending ordinances and references. And then also, there were so many changes since the council's review on the 23rd of September, that, you know, I actually got a little bit confused because it just seemed like isolated pieces from that chapter were being called out, and I didn't have my ref... I didn't know what the rest of surrounding those word changes are just three lines were. And so it was really hard to understand what I was actually reading, because it was so out of context. So I actually would like to... And also, there are some very important elements that were added after our review. And I just think that, you know, this is the month of December, you know, we don't have anybody in the audience, and certainly we're not going to have anybody in the audience here on second reading, December 16th. So I think this is such an important chapter, that maybe we should defer it to January, and maybe have a study session around... I mean, there were quite a few pages that were changed since we last discussed it, and I didn't see a lot of explanation of, you know, why there were so many additional changes. And so I don't need a presentation from you tonight. I just want to delay this till January. So I guess I'm going to make a motion that we defer it... Well, what I'd like to do is have a study session on it, and defer the first reading to a date in the future after today's session. So that's my motion.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I didn't have any trouble reading it. And I think maybe if there are council members who need more time with it, perhaps you could schedule some time with the Development Department to go through it before we have a meeting, rather than having all of us have to go through it all when I've been through it like two, three times now. I just, I don't think we need to postpone it.
Councilmember Christensen?
I'd like to second that.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, I guess we... Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Is it possible to have like a quasi-study session, where like those members of council, we can have a meeting if we've got questions, but we don't have to come if we understand? Like a pre-session? I think that might be a good solution. Is that all right? No, no, it does have to be next week, but when's second reading?
16th, so it would have to be...
So that's what? Two weeks?
Yeah, sometime before the 16th.
Of the year? What happens if we wait till January? What's the... What are the repercussions? Does building stop? Time stands still?
Mayor Coombs, pro, Tim Bagley, there's no hurry in this, other than we were just trying to finish up something that we had started two years ago. And it just happened to fall in December.
Right. Yeah. If we did push it off to like the first week in January, what would that do? Councilmember Finley? If we did a pre-session, did a lot of people answer questions, then we just voted in January? That be all right?
If that's... You want to do that, the way you should do it.
I'm just trying to get hugs, man. I've been fighting all day in court, I want some love. Okay, thank you, Councilmember Finley. Thank you.
Councilmember Levison?
I also think that, you know, there may be some wording changes to discuss, and I don't know if we want to do that. If we do a pre-session to go through it and get some context around, you know, those many pages of additional changes from our last review, if we can have a discussion on first reading, so that staff has time before second reading to make the adjustments, and we can have, you know, a discussion and build on those. So that's what... I just want to make sure that we have that opportunity.
Okay, I guess we've got a motion, it's been seconded. Let's vote.
Wait, wait, wait. The motion... Do you want to repeat the motion before we vote?
Okay. The motion is... You made the motion.
Well, my motion was to have a study session. And, you know, that we would have a study session item on this, so we could go through things. And, I mean, I planned to talk to staff about this, you know, one-on-one, but, you know, I haven't had a lot of opportunity to get all my questions together in, you know, the first day of the work week, too, which would have been yesterday. So I would just like to have that option to have... I would like to have the study session, was what my motion said, and then take this up on first reading in January sometime. And, you know, staff said there's no crashing rush, but I also think it gives the public an opportunity. You know, there are a lot of really substantive changes in this, and to schedule it in December, when no one's frankly paying attention to this, is, I think, a pretty big mistake.
Mayor, if I may, the way I captured the motion was to postpone the item to a study session in January 2015, and defer first reading to a date after that.
Okay. So this doesn't count as first reading, then? Mr. Moore? Okay. It passes 4 to 2 with Councilmember Santos absent, and Councilmember Bagley and Finley
But I'd still like a pre-session instead.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. So the other item I asked to be pulled was Item D. And the reason I asked for Item D to be pulled off is that when I reviewed the executive summary, the federal legislative priorities that were noted from the National Cities may not... And it was a date prior to the adoption of the annual meeting and policy update at the conference. So my motion is that we substitute the legislative priorities noted in the executive summary to include the policy and resolutions book that was voted on and approved by the membership of the NLC at the conference on November, I think it was 21st. And I've given that book to Sandy Cedar, and pointed out some of the more critical resolutions and items that were changed in policy. So that's my motion, to just make sure that we substitute and include the NLC resolution and policy book that was approved by the membership. That's my motion.
Okay. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor. Because I guess my only concern is I haven't read the book.
Did you read the stuff?
Yeah, but the book's not in there.
Well, the book just got done.
Oh, okay. All right. I just haven't read the book.
Okay. We can get to the book.
Okay, that passes 4 to 2 with Councilmember Bagley and Mayor Coombs descending, and Councilmember Yeah. So we need a motion on... Councilmember Levison?
Yes. So Mayor, I will move that we accept the water policy and the CML policy statement for... And approve these legislative policies for 2015 as contained in those documents.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Mayor, the next item on your agenda is Item 11A, 2014 Funding from Affordable Housing Fund for Longmont Housing Development Corporation Land Acquisition, and Approve a Micro Loan Program for Longmont Flood Recovery Housing Applicants. And Kathy Fedler is here to present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kathy Fedler, Housing Community Investment Division Manager. So tonight, I'm here to present two projects for consideration, kind of outside of our normal funding process. And if you remember, when we did go through our 2015 funding process, I did point out that the Housing Development Corporation had applied for a blanket land acquisition application for, I think it was $2 million. And both the TRG and the Housing Advisory Board declined at that time to consider funding that without knowing exactly what was being purchased. So what was told to the Development Corporation at that time was bring us back the applications on a case-by-case basis, where we know exactly what you're going to be purchasing, and we'll consider them, even though it is outside the normal cycle, funding cycle. So the first one that they're bringing to us is for $800,000 to acquire a 2.4-acre parcel of land, right across from their other property at 18th and Hoover area, the Lodge and the Hearthstone. And it would allow them to build somewhere between 60 to 90 affordable rental housing units, eventually, probably in the next three to six years. So they're requesting the full purchase price of the $800,000, which was supported by an appraisal. But they do have several other applications in for additional funding. So if they do receive those additional funds, then that would be used to buy down, or make prepayments on the loan that's being recommended. At this point, so what is being recommended by both advisory boards is to a 2% interest rate loan in the amount of $800,000 for a five-year term with interest-only payments, and the full balance due at the end of the loan term. Because we did have a banker sitting on the TRG, who kind of arm-twisted a little bit, the agreement that was reached was that in case the market changes and the LHDC cannot or chooses not to build on the parcel of land, and instead decides to sell the land, if there's any profit above the $800,000 purchase price, the city would share in that profit equally, 50/50. But if any future sale would result in a loss, that LHDC would absorb the full amount of that loss and still be responsible for repayment of the full amount of the loan, plus interest accrued to date. I don't think that's in the LHDC's crystal ball, that they want to sell the land, they're really acquiring it to hold and eventually build on. We have done this in the past with, actually, the land that the Lodge and Hearthstone are built on. We loaned them, it was about $700,000, almost $800,000 at that time. And I think that was in 2005, maybe, and by 2009 and 2012, they had built those two properties. Currently, the Affordable Housing Fund has an uncommitted balance of 1.2 million. There's nothing, if you... We move forward and fund this loan, there's nothing that will be supplanted or will not be able to be funded from the Affordable Housing Fund. Everything that we were recommending for funding from 2015 would come from the loan repayments that are generated each year from the fund. So nothing from that uncommitted balance was going for those projects. So I don't know if you have any questions about that particular project, before I move into the other description?
Councilmember Christensen?
Would this be the 60 to 90 units of housing, across the street, it's senior housing, but is... Would this be just straight affordable housing for anyone of any age?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Christensen, I think that'll be determined at the time that they're getting ready to build. So they'll do a market analysis at that time, which they'd have to do for any funding source for the construction. So at that time, it will tell them whether there's really a greater need for senior housing, or family housing, or individuals, so...
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess my only question is, I'm no real estate expert, but is $800,000 a fair price? Is that a good deal?
Supported by an appraisal, so...
That is indeed a good deal.
It is what was offered, I think, in the negotiations.
Yeah, come on, Michael. Please, let us...
Michael Reese with the Longmont Housing Development Corporation, and I'm also the executive director, as you know, of the Longmont Housing Authority. The Housing Corporation feels this is a good price. It's for sale now. It is supported by a market appraisal. Also, it is located... Its location for us is why we really are pursuing it, is really right next to an existing campus of two buildings that we own. And we'd like to go ahead and complete a campus of affordable housing in that area. And it's up for sale now.
All right, great answer.
If there's any other questions, thanks.
Kathy did a great job summarizing.
Okay. So then the other project that we're...
Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Levison?
So besides this $800,000, would the project be coming back to the city for additional money or matching for the actual building of the unit?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison, I think that's to be determined. What we've done in the past, like with the Lodge and Hearthstone, is when they got ready for construction, they paid off part of the loan, and we rolled the... Some of the balance into a longer term. It wasn't really for construction, because that's more short-term, but a longer-term financing loan. I think it depends on the project and what other financing sources might be available at that time. So it's possible, but we don't know yet.
And then, one other question. So if the original amount of $800,000 is what the 2% interest rate's going to be based on, and if it loses value, it's still... The $800,000 is still there. But if it increases in value, do we... I mean, I guess there's no extra... But could they leverage additional funds against that?
They could. If the appraised value increases, yes, they'd have equity in the property that they could borrow against as well.
And so when the appraisal...
We'd be in first position, so...
Right. Okay. So when the appraisal came in, though, it came in as if it was a commercial establishment, not with a change, a zoning change, that it would be residential zoning? And the parcel, when it came in with the appraisal, it was appraised at the current commercial zoning value? And I'm just jumping off of Councilmember Bagley's good deal.
Well, good deal. It was... It was Michael Reese at the Housing Corporation. It was appraised both ways, with... As an apartment building, mixed-use apartment building, and a commercial building.
And so it appraised the same price, either one? And so mixed-use could be something like infused services, or if you're envision mixed-use for this type of project?
No, maybe I misspoke. Mixed-use, as it is currently zoned with housing and office, quite a bit of office, and retail, or as an apartment building with less office space and no retail. So that'll be the zoning change we'll pursue.
And then the zoning will, prior to purchase, will the zoning... I guess this is going to go in after purchase?
Oh, yeah. This is a land purchase hold for three to six years. Part of the things to understand is, private sector lending community, for us to purchase a piece of land, they really want to see vertical construction inside for years, and we just simply don't have the resources to do that in the industry in which we operate. So we're trying to line up, make sure we line up a pace of land. So three to six years out, we have something for some future board, and whatever the community needs are. And I think a follow-up is, we purchased, we're able to acquire the Prairie Village sites, and they were ready to go once we were able to establish some funding through the flood recovery fund that came into the community. So we're... That ground was purchased five years ago, even more than five years ago, was given to us, actually. And so it's sort of allowing for our housing boards to have some land in the... for our housing boards to have some land in the pipeline for future growth, future delivery of affordable units, and in the right spot.
Great, and so the other question is, if we had, if the loan is a five-year loan term and you're talking about six years, would we then, you know, do something at five years as a check-in, because you're saying three to six years.
Three to six years and go vertical, but beginning in year four, we would really begin hustling on what to do and how to go vertical there and take out, restructure the first loan position or take it out completely.
Okay, great, thanks for answering the questions.
Okay, go ahead and describe the microloan.
Okay, all right, so staff along with Councilmembers Santos and Levison has been exploring setting up a microloan program for flood-affected applicants to our housing recovery programs, so CDBGDR is very complicated to provide assistance to the folks who were flood-impacted, especially around their housing needs, and we have to do something what's called duplication of benefits, so we have to consider everything that they may have gotten from any other funding source, their insurance, SBA, FEMA, anything that they might have gotten from the R Center or some philanthropic organizations even, churches, if it was used for the same purpose that they're requesting the CDBGDR funds for. So if they got funds to repair their home, then we have to count those unless they use them for home repair and can show that through receipts, otherwise, we have to count that and we have to deduct that from their, what they'd be eligible for DR. Long story short, folks are coming up with a gap sometimes, sometimes they had to use money to pay rent when they had home repair money, and so if they didn't use it for the approved source, then we have to deduct that. So they're coming up with four, $5,000 shorts sometimes, and these are folks that are, struggle with credit, have low incomes, et cetera, and so going to a bank to borrow the funds isn't necessarily something they can do. If they are looking to purchase a mobile home, they are sometimes having to finance part of the mobile home through the dealer or the manufacturer, and those are very high-interest-rate loans, kind of on the par, well, they're not even as good as used car loans. So anyway, what we had been exploring was some microloan program that could provide that funding gap that they have at low interest rate for folks who are somewhat of a credit risk. So we talked to a couple of different banks, and the last one that we talked to is really interested in setting up a loan program that would actually work with the CDBGDR application, so folks wouldn't have to do a separate application, they would, we would kind of not totally process it, but we would recommend if, so have already vetted if they have the gap needs, so that gives the bank a little bit more assurance, and that they're willing to give us a fairly decent interest rate and are willing to work on the term, particularly around making sure that people aren't paying more than 40% of their income for housing and this loan payment, so they're willing to structure the loan out further if needed to do that. In order to keep the loan terms affordable and because of the high risk, as I mentioned, the city is interested in establishing a default reserve fund as part of the program agreement in case any of the loans default with the bank and the city sharing equally in that loss, which is also very generous of the bank to be willing to share in that, a lot of times, they want the government entity to cover the entire default. So in the case of a default, the bank would conduct its normal collection process and whatever outstanding balance that they couldn't get is what would be shared with the city paying 50% and the bank taking the loss for the other 50%. So we're seeking permission to use either the Affordable Housing Fund and/or the CDBG Fund, not the CDBGDR, but the regular CDBG Fund, to fund the default reserve set aside, which would hold out 50% of the outstanding loan balance up to $125,000, because we're talking about a total $250,000 loan pool. If the Affordable Housing Fund is used, we would repay the fund with CDBG funds once a year or more frequently if possible, it's just kind of difficult to set up under the CDBG program, a lump-sum payment system without knowing what you really need, if you let it kind of sit there, then you have a lot of reporting requirements on something that you haven't expended yet, so if we could do it so we can upfront with the Affordable Housing Fund and then repay as we know exactly what we might need to repay the fund, that would work best, however, we could set it up straight from the CDBG Fund if we're not going to be able to do it from the Affordable Housing Fund. I think that is, oh, other than, there was an issue that came up around the legality of setting up a default reserve, and we are looking into that, so again, we would only be doing this if it's legally defensible and appropriate, and I don't know if you have any questions about this?
I do have a question, so what is our risk, let's say, if we loaned out all this money and everybody defaulted, or is it $125,000 is what our total risk is?
At the max, so if there was any default collections, that would come off the top first, so it's likely to be less than.
Yeah, okay. And I assume that, because the bank's still involved, that they're still looking at the, I guess, worthiness of loaning money, I mean, if someone, you know, is not making a whole lot of money, that's fine, it needs to hand up, but if someone, you know, has defaulted on several loans and they still have their big-screen TV and they still have every single sports package on DirecTV and all this, and they, you know, I mean, there's people that just don't know how to save money, period, you know, if they've got a dollar in their pocket, they have to spend it, so I assume the bank is, is going to try to weed out the, you know, the truly, the people that just really don't deserve to have that loan and just help the people that need it, I trust that that's what the banks, they're, because they're going to want to protect their 50% too.
I would say two things on that, so first, yes, they're going to pull credit reports on everybody, and so we'll be making kind of case-by-case decisions around that, I wouldn't think that we would refer folks that we think have issues like that, first of all, and then everyone is going to be required, I didn't put this in the council communication, but I should have, everyone will be required to go through the financial counseling and do a one-on-one budget session with the housing counselors before they'd be eligible as well.
Okay. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Originally, when I read this, the first time I read it, I was against it because I figured, you know, city shouldn't be getting involved with this experimental microloan program, then I read it again, and you go, well, maybe, you know, I mean, there's, seems like it's a, it's a community benefit, and they got a partner, and then I read it again, and it sounds pretty good. The, I'm with the mayor, that, you know, the, I think it's a great example of public-private partnerships where you've got a city need that, I mean, God bless the bleeding heart, but you also got a 50% partner who loses money in a capitalistic system that will make sure that we're operating in a smart way, so I think it's actually a safe, safe thing to do, as well as a very proactive, positive thing for our community, so I'm all for it. I'm going to be voting to approve both.
Councilmember Christensen?
Kathy, thank you for explaining to us about that thing that you left out, the counseling, because that was the question I had, a lot of people got themselves into trouble because they were not very sophisticated, and most of us, especially when we're young, really don't know what we're doing as far as money goes, and then a lot of people got into trouble with the predatory loaning, loan practices, and that's how we had the meltdown. So, and you'll be, you will be in charge of the counseling for the financial, the financial counseling, or who will be doing that?
So we partner with the Boulder County Housing Counseling Program, and we fund them with regular CDBG funds, so this will be a part of the normal referrals that we make and requirement that we make in our partnership with them.
Yeah, I think that'll really help people from not getting in trouble, and that's what I wanted to, you know, be supporting both of these, I've driven around trying to find the 18th and Hoover site, and I finally did find it, and it's a, it's a great site for this, if, so I think that's a wonderful thing, because it's, it's right up there and it's within walking distance of grocery stores, coffee shops, barber shops, it, to me, it's a wonderful project, and I'm glad we can do it, thank you. And there's a great gym across the street.
Councilmember Levison?
How many people do you expect would be accessing this program?
The microloan program?
Yes, the microloan.
Well, right now, we probably have about five to six candidates that could potentially go anywhere from $4,000 to $8,000 maybe is the gap that they have.
And then on the counseling, is it going to be the same, I mean, I guess, my assumption is maybe people will choose not to own a home again, so is there something to help people with maybe gap funding to get out of the home that they want to abandon, if it's a home that's not habitable and they can't make it habitable after, you know, the work that may have already been done? I know that we have a couple of those situations, but if they decide not to own a home again, you know, will this, some of this money maybe go to helping them get an apartment?
Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison, so it wouldn't be used for rent assistance, although we have a program for that, for folks who are getting out of homeownership or they were in the rental market to begin with, but I guess there could be a situation if somebody needs to have their home demolished or a mobile home taken away or something like that, and the gap happens to be that, I guess it's possible.
And then I guess the other question is that, are they going to, the counseling is going to be the same as what we do for the down payment assistance program, is it going to be exactly the same counseling?
No, it'd be more around financial counseling as opposed to homeownership training, so it's more around default counseling, not necessarily default counseling because they wouldn't be in default, but financial, can they afford it, is it a good loan, how can their budget support it, what do they have to do around their budget to keep solvent, et cetera?
So would, would it be a good idea to have them go through the regular housing assistance, you know, like the first-time homeowner stuff, because if they, you know, it does something a little further beyond just the financial counseling, doesn't it?
It does, and that, you know, would be open to them, and if they are, I forget under which circumstances, so if, I think it's if they're getting the down payment assistance and then they need additional funds, they'd be required to do the homeownership training as part of that program. If they're getting replacement housing, I think we decided they didn't necessarily need to do the homeownership training because they had owned a home before, but that's something that's always open to them as an option.
Great, and I'd like to see people doing it, the bank involved, is this part of community investment requirements of the bank?
It is to their benefit, to do the community reinvestment.
But is it part of the federal program for community investment the banks have to do?
I don't, on this particular one, I'm not sure, I mean, I think it's always to their benefit to do, under the Reinvestment Act, but I don't think it's like a part of the requirement that they have to do it.
Well, I just wanted to know if this was, you know, the other advantages, the, you know, regulatory advantage to them as well, and whoever the bank is, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. I hope the banks will be, the name will be revealed at some point, you know, with the wave of the magic wand, so thank you.
Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I think both these programs are awesome, I remember when Councilmember Santos brought up the microloan idea, and I think you've made it work, and I think that's awesome. I would like to move that we approve the funding for both these programs.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Just another point to make on this land acquisition is that there is a willing seller right now too that wants to move the land, and I think that's always an important detail that we don't want to overlook, and same time also with this microloan program, it's kind of nice to see us stretching the boundaries and trying something a little different, and so I definitely will be supporting this.
Okay, we've got a motion, it's been seconded, let's vote. It passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Santos absent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard, no, I guess we have one more issue, it's easy, getting ahead of myself, go ahead, we got the, we got the calendar issue.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager, and I'm here to talk a little bit about the calendar for 2015, it's sort of hard to believe that we're talking about 2015's calendar, but it does start next month, and so we had a couple of questions that we need to have answered today, but essentially, I'm looking for some feedback today on this calendar, and then what we'll do is we'll take it and we'll finalize it, formalize it, and bring it back to you on the 16th for formal adoption, but essentially, what we've done is taken, I think you, you guys have the calendar in the pack, yes, with all the different questions, and so I was just hoping we could briefly go through the month just to make sure that this is where you want study sessions, we have not canceled anything, this shows what a calendar would look like with all meetings intact, and so what we have found in the past is that if there are meetings that you know you're going to cancel or you're interested in canceling, it certainly helps the public process as well as the staff to know that a little bit ahead of time, so this is the third year we're doing this process, it seems to work pretty well.
Okay, Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor, when do you think that we'll be putting in open forum, because open forum's usually in January?
What an excellent question, so if you switch to your January calendar page, that's the question about January, so you approve the open forum each year, we would suggest that it would be on January 6th, which is a study session, and that is a forum where anybody can come and just talk to you, and it's, you know, it's an open forum, and so if you are interested in doing that, we can turn the 6th study session or the 20th into an open forum, and so that's the first question for you, what would you like to do?
I actually think we've done it on the day after Martin Luther King Day, and that seems to have worked pretty well too, because it's, it just seems that we have some more flexibility with people coming and talking about things, so I would suggest using the 20th.
Anybody else, Councilmember Finley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs, I think that's probably a good idea, because we could have that study session for the planning on the 6th, since they've waited for two years, we could get that right in at the beginning of the year, that'd be great.
Okay.
Okay, so if that works, all right, then I'm going to, if I.
Councilmember Bagley?
Not, that would be awesome.
I got other ideas, I mean, not on this idea, but.
All right, on January?
No, other months.
If you are okay with the.
We're going to go month by month?
Yeah, if that's okay.
Yeah, let's do it month by month.
We'll do it really fast, though.
Yeah, so January.
So January, if you're okay with the open forum on the 20th, would you please just not?
But I know what we're all going to do, we're going to get rid of CML and National League of Cities, and we got a spring break, and we're going to limit four meetings a month, but we'll go month by month.
You're in a hurry, aren't you?
Kathy, you're welcome to make whatever motion you'd like.
That's true, but I already got my phone.
Okay, so February, we don't, we're not proposing any closures, but often, you know, there's two regular sessions, two study sessions.
All right, that looks good to me.
Okay, March, so in March, we, this is one of those that we do have actually one, two, three, four, five different sessions, so sometimes you'll cancel the last study session, NLC Congress of Cities is, you'll notice that week of March 9th, 10th being the regular session, we could switch that to either the 17th or the 3rd, we, the staff would suggest making the 17th and the 31st regular sessions, and the 3rd and the 24th study sessions if you did that, but you could also cancel the study sessions.
Yeah.
Do that, okay, do that, and would you like to cancel the second study session as part of that, or the first one?
Whatever it was for the community agenda.
So what I'm saying is that the 3rd would be canceled, the 10th would be canceled for NLC.
So the 10th canceled?
Uh-huh, 17th would be a regular session, 24th would be study, 31st would be regular.
Sounds good to me.
That work?
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor, when are we going to have our retreat, because what we've been trying to do is balance the week after our retreat to be a study session or something that's not got a lot of, you know, like 300, 400 pages, because we've, so are there any suggestions about retreat?
So that's an excellent question, we would propose that your retreat this year either continue to focus on budget prioritization or, you know, potentially do some team building, we would talk about different topics, you could certainly talk about which weekend you'd like to do that now, last year, you had two of them, the last one ending in, the last one was in July, July, and so it's certainly up to you guys, you guys can decide your retreat dates and times now if you'd like, and we'll bring back the post topics, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I think looking at retreat for March or April, maybe even April, is, would fit with things, and, but I don't, the other thing I don't know is how much other work would the council be participating in, some of the comp plan updates, and how that flows in, I don't see any indication in the schedule about, you know, our involvement with public meetings and that sort of thing.
And Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, I don't know that we totally know that yet. And Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levison, I don't know that we totally know that yet. I don't, yeah, Joni's saying we don't know that yet. But, you know, at the same time, you could, if you wanted to, concentrate your retreat on some of that work as well. But if you create a retreat date, then we can start to talk about topics, or we could put that conversation off to another day. Your choice.
Councilmember Moore.
Do we actually need to do a retreat? It takes a whole day out of your life, and I'm not sure I got the value out of it last year.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, there's no requirement to do a retreat by any means? I'm sure maybe you have a lot of projects that are rocking and rolling.
Councilmember Christiansen.
I'd be happy with just one retreat. I, yeah, I sort of share Councilman Morris' opinion. Since we're, are we in April though? No, we're not up to April yet.
We're still, we were still in March talking about retreat dates. We could continue through the whole calendar and then do retreat at the end.
Yeah, why don't we finish this and not deal with retreats until the end?
All right, so April, the only question, this is four meetings, and they're just laid out normally, but if you would like to take off for spring break for St. Green Valley, then it doesn't affect anything, we'll just take off that study session if you'd like to. I saw one nod, anybody else? I saw a no, and yes, two yes.
Yeah, and I don't care, I don't have children, but.
All right. So we'll cancel the 7th. Everything else will stay on the regular session schedule.
I don't have children.
All right, on to me. And you'll notice Coffee with Counsel is also listed on this, and we'll fill those in as we go. These are, you know, kind of the traditional dates. We'll give you dates as we assign them next year. So May, we have the same setup, two regular sessions, two study sessions. The question is, do you want to take off the 26th for Memorial Day? If so, you could do the 5th and the 19th as study, as regular sessions, or you could do back to backs, regular sessions and that. Up to you.
So if we wanted to take Tuesday off, then we just move the regular sessions to when and when?
So you could either have regular sessions on the 5th and the 19th, or we could do back to backs sessions on the 12th and the 19th. It's a little easier when there's a week in between. So the recommendation would be to have the regular sessions on the 5th and the 19th. The 12th becomes a study session, 26th is canceled.
I move that.
Okay, Councilmember Moore.
Would we have any, any of the comp plan updates done by May? None, nothing?
I'm seeing.
Okay, I guess I kind of agree with Councilmember Bagley to make the 5th and the 19th the regular sessions and cancel the study session on the 26th. Or else just pencil it in if we want to cancel it later, we can.
But it's a little tougher because it's a regular session, and so we actually want to. So that's okay with you. We'll bring it back, and you guys still have another opportunity to approve it.
Yeah, I think, yeah, might as well cancel it now.
On to June. CML Conference is on the week of the 15th. The meeting is on the 16th. It's a study session, you can cancel that without any problems if many of you are planning to go to CML. This one could be.
I'm planning on going to CML, anybody else?
So we will cancel the 16th. Excellent. Anything else for June?
Yeah.
Seeing none, we'll move on to July. So July, the 4th of July is actually on a Saturday, and so the city offices are closed on Friday, the 3rd. It doesn't necessarily affect anything in July, so there's four meetings, four, two regular sessions, two study sessions. So our thought is just to leave it the way it is unless you'd like to cancel something. Okay. On to August. August is the same thing, two study sessions, two regular sessions, no holidays.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, Councilmember Levison.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. When do you think we'll get the budget?
So the budget usually hits that very last one in August, so August 25th is usually when you get the budget. I'm going to look at Jim, make sure that I'm right. And then in September, you actually have five sessions. Those are, that's when you really hit the budget is in September. You have five meetings, five Tuesdays in September, so you can still actually choose to cancel one of those meetings if you wanted to cancel Labor Day and still be able to fit in the budget, because what the budget needs is four meetings to be able to get.
Actually, there's, there's, you know, the Yom Kippur actually falls, begins on Tuesday night, the 22nd, and I will not, because of religious obligations, I will not be able to attend the 22nd. And I know when we've had that happen before, we've either done a Monday meeting or canceled it, you know, and just moved the meeting to Monday, the 21st. So anyway, I, you know, I was just thinking that people might want one last gasp of vacation in August, since we're not taking any time off in July, that we may want to consider taking a week off in August. I'm not sure which school, what the school calendar looks like, but probably the 11th would be the day we'd want to take off because by the 18th, certainly by the 25th, they'll be back in school.
Yeah, because usually back in the 17th.
And they're probably going to start, you know, the 19th or something, so I don't know if other people want to take the 11th off.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I'm tired today, so I say take it all off. But the, yeah, I'd have no problem taking the 11th off, but I also think we should, I was going to recommend the 8th after Labor Day, but I think five days in a month, I mean Charter, I think it's up, unless there's a reason to have a meeting, I don't think we need to have a meeting. And so I think, you know, four a month is okay. I'm not opposed to three in a month like August if council wants to cancel the 11th, but I think we should cancel the 22nd, given the holiday.
Okay, so let me, let me make sure I got this right. So we're saying that in August, we're going to cancel the 11th and move that regular session to the 4th. Okay? Of course, I'm saying this, Valerie may say, no, it needs to go the other way when she gets back, but cancel the 11th, move the regular session to the 4th, 18th stays the study session, 25th is a regular session, move on to September. Suggestion is that we cancel the 22nd. What that means is that you, is that we keep all of the other ones on in order to accommodate the budget. So the regular session then becomes, it's probably the regular sessions become the 1st and the 15th. Study sessions between become the 8th and the 29th. And Jim's going to come down here and tell me if that doesn't work. I recognize we're kind of losing that between months in some cases. Yeah. Sorry, was that okay? Okay. So if what Eugene is saying, that we might want to keep the 8th a regular session, keep the 8th a regular session, Eugene, is that what you're saying, then make the 29th the second regular session? Okay, 4th and 18. Okay? And then the 1st and 15th become regular sessions, is that what you just said?
Yeah.
Great. Does that work for everybody?
So September, the 1st and the 15th become regular sessions.
Study sessions are on the 8th, and the 29th and 22nd is canceled. And that maintains four for the budget.
Councilmember Levison.
Mayor, I just would like to make a suggestion that we could hold the Monday, the 21st in case we needed additional time on the budget work, if that's okay with everybody. And I do actually appreciate people's consideration of the Yom Kippur holiday for me.
Would you like to hold that Monday? Yeah, I'm, okay. That's all right. And if we get in the middle of the budget process, you always have the ability to make extra meetings. So October, that moves into October. October, four meetings, four sessions, two study, two regular, we're not really recommending any differences. Coffee with Counsel, Yom Eno is moved up one week so that it doesn't hit Halloween Day. Does that work? November? So November gets tricky, because November always gets tricky, so.
The 24th, just get it, done.
The what?
The 24th, cancel the 24th.
Cancel the 24th. So the 24th, this is the week of Thanksgiving, 24th is the week of Thanksgiving. The first week is Election Day, and NLC Congress of Cities is that week. So normally you cancel Election Day, you have sometimes canceled Thanksgiving, so we could do back to backs on the 10th and the 17th if you want to. And that's okay, if you want to do that.
Would cancel the 9th, will Councilmember Levison perpetually stay a member of council?
No. Charter does not say that.
Okay, so we have that, on the 10th and the 17th, and cancel.
Yeah. Cancel the 3rd and the 24th is what I just heard. We don't normally like to do that, but if we know about it in advance, it's helpful.
I am now.
Okay.
Yeah.
That takes us to December, look how fast that was. Okay, December has five meetings, so you have some options here. So since there would be two weeks between the last regular session and December 1st, you could, these are kind of open, you could cancel the 22nd and the 29th, you could cancel one of those, whatever works for you. Cancel the 22nd, 29th. Okay? I'm hearing yes, yes? And then I'll work with the Clerk's office, figure out what that looks like the best. My guess is the 1st and the 15th become regular sessions. And Eugene is nodding, that's a good sign. Okay. Okay. Anybody want to talk about the retreat, around the dates and times of that retreat? Yeah, we don't really have topics brought to you particularly, but this is the time in which we usually make that decision of when and what kinds of topics we're going to have for the retreat, so it's completely.
Councilmember Levison.
So I think that it, you know, I like the idea of a retreat because it's only the one time a year that we can talk about very long-term future priorities and ideas, the big idea stuff. And, you know, I'd like to look at doing the retreat, maybe if we're taking that study, if we're taking the 7th off to maybe, oh no, Good Friday's the 3rd of April, to maybe do it, maybe do it the 27th of March or the 28th of March and reschedule Coffee with Counsel. You know, doing it in March will then give us plenty of time, I guess. We could pick a couple of topics and maybe learn something new. And one of the things, I think, looking at the budget prioritization process and maybe how we are standing with it and what might, we might need to apply, would be very good to do earlier than later. And especially since the Times Call seems to think we're flush with money because we're raking in the revenue. I don't really think we're raking in huge amounts of revenue that are, you know, going to make extraordinary changes in our operations. But I would look at it that last week in March on the, maybe doing it on the 27th or 28th, and then the other date would be perhaps the 17th or 18th of April.
Mayor Coombs, Members of Council.
Councilmember Bagley.
One of the things that we were, I was just kind of talking with Joni and Jim about, so the comp plan process is a 15-month process that starts in January, so there may not be stuff that's really ready quite during this calendar time for a good retreat. Jim said that we're going to, we promised we would bring back monthly some of these issues around budget prioritization. We could certainly lump some of those into one session early on to help give us direction to develop the 2016 budget, absolutely. We also have lots of other large projects that you may want more in-depth updates about that could be considered for retreat, as well as any kind of communication, training, or, you know, fun team building types of things.
Councilmember Bagley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess, I guess my thought on the retreat is I do think it's a good idea to have a retreat at least one day, even two. I know that, I mean, just, it's kind of like cleaning the kitchen, something you hate to do, but it's good for you. The, or maybe taking out the trash would be a better analogy. But given last time, I mean, we had some, I mean, there have been some real issues with councils in the past in this town where they don't get along. I mean, our politics, ideologies, and personalities will always be different, but, I mean, we have had some real chasms between council members. I think that the retreat, A, helps us to kind of mesh, but last time we had some interpersonal problems, and we saw, you know, some good come as a result of that meeting. I also think that if it wouldn't have been for the retreat, you know, I probably wouldn't have paid him as much attention to the budget recess, or reset process. I, so as well as the internal perspective, the guy that came up from Texas who shared with us how to kind of understand each other. So it's painful, you know, it's lengthy, but I also think it's, it's good for us. And so that's my first thought. I'm all for the retreat. The other thing is, as much as I say it, there, I mean, as much as I know I'm getting in trouble because we're going to get into it, I think we should probably wait till the big guy's back, because getting his input on what we should talk about as well as when we should plan it. Maybe we should hold off till Gabe's back, and then we can have a conversation of how many days and what we should plan on. And you remember, you just remind me when I'm back, and you tell him, hey, Bagley said to wait for you, be nice. So, anyway, I said we'd wait for him.
And I think also, let's just put these other dates in the calendar and let you see a finished calendar in terms of where everything's really going to fall out based on your input, and then we can use that to really target in on some dates. So that may be easier when we bring it all together.
All right. I agree. Thank you, Sandy.
All right, thank you very much.
All right, now it's time for final call, public invited to be heard. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak at this time? Seeing no one, I'll close final call, public invited to be heard. So now it's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Finley.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. In the spirit of the season, I want to mention another great place in Longmont to buy Christmas presents this December. Cheese Importers at 103 Main Street in Longmont is a great place. You know, if you're not going to your relatives' house, then they're coming to yours, and you're going to need some cheese for them to eat. But if you are going to their house, you're going to need to take them a gift, and cheese is an excellent gift, because, you know, I think, don't, except for Mayor, but you could buy him fruit or something. Anyway, you should all go and purchase something at the Cheese Importers for Christmas.
Councilmember Levison.
I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. And also just wanted to ask whether or not we have any updates on what the council float for the parade on December 17th is looking like, because I did talk and get some ideas around that, and I didn't know if we needed to help out with anything. Do you know anything?
I do. Mayor Coombs, Members of Council, Sandy Cedar, Assistant City Manager.
And we didn't set this up.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't. But Tom Ronnie Oss and I were talking the other day around, you know, doing some sort of a council combined float with LPC to really roll out next light. And so we would propose that that be the council float, that you are able to be on and ride with the LPC crew, really advertising and whooping and hollering about the next light broadband utility. So if that works for you all, Maria and Marissa, Maria and Marissa are starting to be able to pull together lists of what kinds of lights they're going to need and what kinds of decorations and stuff like that. So we would be happy to get you more information, but if you are comfortable with that as your parade float, that's the direction we would like to head.
As long as we have like those, those yellow swooshy things that makes it look like the next light, the swoosh, the yellow swoosh, that's a pretty cool swoosh. So, and then I'm not going to be able to attend the interviews this weekend due to a family obligation, but I wish you all a lot of fun doing them, and I'll be making a lot of phone calls to do one-on-one interviews with candidates. And I also appreciate all the time staff has put into putting those notebooks together, and it's pretty amazing how many people applied again too. So that's it.
Well, I got this subject up last week. The Denver mayor asked if we would be willing to help out with a letter of support. They were going after some grant money, and they were wondering if we would be one of the cities that would, so I gave what that letter was to each one of you, and so if anybody is against that or something, you know, you need to let me know before I give them a nod that we would support doing that. So you don't have to decide right tonight, but in the next couple of days, they need to have an answer from us. So, anyway, yeah, I think it'd be good too. Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, I read through the letter at time before the meeting started, and I think we should be supporting that as well.
All right. I just don't see a downside to it, so...
Yeah, I don't see a downside to it either.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments from council members?
Nice bet.
Thank you. All right. City manager, any comments?
I have no comments, but Sandy wanted to talk about the bags really quick.
Okay.
Yes. So the bags on your desk mark the promotion of the shop Longmont, promotion for 2014, and essentially, you can clip a coupon online at the Times Call. You can also just go into many of the retailers, we've given them some coupons, too. And if you spend $15 with any of these local retailers, then you get this beautiful tote bag, which was designed sort of via Facebook. So we put out the question on Facebook, what is your favorite place to hang out in Longmont? And those are the answers that you see on the tote bag. So, so spend your money in Longmont, shop often, shop in town, you know, shop big retailers, little retailers, anybody that's around. We've got a huge list of people that are participating, and the bags are going like hotcakes, so enjoy.
Thank you. City attorney, any comments?
No comments, Mayor.
All right, this meeting is adjourned.